Tonight, we have candidates from two county council races. From the Valley Isle, get your questions ready. South Maui council incumbent Don Couch faces a strong opponent, business owner Kelly Takaya King. Hear what they have to say about the pace of development and the need for infrastructure and affordable housing. From Oahu, City Council District 9, incumbent Ron Menor is here with his opponent, scientist Emil Svercina. It's no surprise that they don't agree on rail, but there are other issues central Oahu residents should hear about. From Maui, it's Couch versus King. On Oahu, Menor versus Svercina. They're waiting to hear from you. This live presentation of Insights on PBS Hawaii starts now.
Aloha and welcome to Insights on PBS Hawaii. I'm Mahalani Richardson. It's a big year for the Maui County Council. All nine at-large seats are up for grabs this year, which could mean a significant shakeup in the status quo if newcomers unseat the incumbents. Now, one of the most watched races features incumbent Don Couch and entrepreneur Kelly Takaya King, both of whom hail from the island's South Maui District, and that includes Kihei and Wailea. They're both here tonight to talk about how they made life better for residents on the Valley Isle. And then we'll shift gears to the race for Honolulu City Council District 9, which includes Mililani, Waikele, Waipahu, and Eva Beach. Incumbent Ron Menor and opponent Emil Svercina are here to discuss needs facing those who live in this rapidly growing district. So please consider participating in tonight's discussion. You can email, call, or tweet your questions, and you can find a livestream of this program at pbshawaii.org. Now, don't forget to call in your questions early for the candidates for Maui County Council, since it'll be featured only during the first half of the program. Now, we should tell you, prior to tonight's show, there was a random drawing that determined the seating order and the order that we'll use throughout the program. And now to the nonpartisan candidates from Maui County Council, South Maui District. Kelly Takaya King is the co-owner of Pacific Biodiesel, which promotes a sustainable future through the community-based production of renewable fuels. She's also served as a member of the Hawaii State Board of Education and has been involved in several community organizations, including the Hawaiian Islands Land Trust, the Hawaii Energy Policy Forum, and the Hawaii Renewable Energy Alliance Corporation. An incumbent Maui council member, Don Couch, has held the South Maui seat since 2010, and he currently chairs the council's planning committee. Mr. Couch is the former executive assistant to Mayor Alan Arakawa, was the former deputy director of planning for Maui County, and is a former chair of the Maui County Board of Ethics. Good evening to you both, and thank you for traveling here from Maui.
Aloha.
Aloha. Good evening.
Aloha to you both. Councilmember, why don't I start with you?
Sure.
What would you consider as your greatest accomplishment so far, and why should voters reelect you?
My greatest accomplishment has been that I've been really, really working for the community. There's a lot of things that we, you know, a lot of balls that you have to juggle, and we've done some really good things with the recycled water. We're expanding that in South Maui and West Maui. We're getting as much infrastructure as we can. We're doing a lot more on the water situation on Maui. We're working on getting housing going. We've had a few projects approved. We need a lot more approved because of what is required by the state. DBAD said that we should be getting 1,400 homes a year for the last five or six years, and we've only been building maybe 200 to 300. So that's what's causing all our problem, and what we're trying to do on my planning committee is to plan the right way to grow Maui, so it's sustainable, and so it is also walkable and bikeable. We're really looking into walkable, bikeable-type communities now.
Ms. King, what do you consider your greatest career accomplishment so far, and why do you feel there's a need for change in leadership at the council?
Okay, those are two big questions, but let me answer the first one. I feel like the biggest accomplishment so far is taking a company, our 20 years of Pacific Biodiesel. We started back in 1995 and created a company around a recycling project. It turned into a, not only a fuel company that built biodiesel plants across the U.S. and one in Japan, but we were able to, we were ahead of the curve. We were actually there when the issue of sustainability and climate change became huge. We've been able to address issues of food and fuel, because we've expanded into several projects. I'm very proud of the fact that despite where the economy was, we're at a point now where we're employing 80 people across three islands in this state, and that's 79 families, because we're one of them, that we're responsible for. We're also employing people with degrees in engineering, chemistry, business, accounting, technology, and on the Big Island in an area where those jobs were never available on the east side of the Big Island. And the reason I think there needs to be change is because we haven't seen enough progress in the past few years. There's also been too much of an emphasis on development without infrastructure. Kihei's biggest issue is infrastructure right now. And one of my opponent's projects that he was supporting was a giant mall in an area that was not zoned for that. We don't have the infrastructure for it, and it didn't fit into the community plan. So there's, you know, that's one of the issues that I'm looking at and that urged people to, that really inspired people to urge me to run for office. I'm doing this as a community service. It's not a career goal. It's not a career pathway for me, just as I did when I ran for the Board of Education. I felt like changes needed to happen, and I ran for the State Board of Education, not because I wanted a career in politics, but because I felt we needed better representation and a more progressive attitude.
Councilman, why don't you respond to that?
Sure.
In terms of talk about the need for development or the need to build the economy, but at the same time protect the environment and keep the community's needs in mind?
And that's what we're doing. I do want to set the record straight in that I have never once mentioned or voted on the mall that my opponent is talking about. It came before council in 1999. I was on the Board of Ethics at the time, as I was actually the chair at the time. So that has been put out on Facebook, not necessarily by my opponent, but by a lot of people who think that I'm very pro-development, and it's totally incorrect, so I wanted to get that out. We do need...
So would you, for someone who might label you as the pro-development candidate, what would you say?
I'm pro-smart growth. Like I said, we need 1,400 homes a year, and we're sorely lacking them, but you can't just throw them out there like they used to do in South Maui, especially in South Maui. They just kind of gave it to whoever and didn't really plan it very well. My whole idea is we've got the Maui Island Plan that we worked very hard on. It took us two years to come up and say, "This is where you can develop, and this is where you can't develop." And so, we have drawn our line in the sand with urban growth boundaries, and then inside that, we are working with people who do mixed-use communities. You see them on the mainland quite a bit, and back in old Europe, it used to be that same way, where you have retail shops below and you live above, or you can get to wherever you want to go as far as grocery shopping or whatever by walking or biking. So we're working on that. We're putting in a bike lane in where the North-South Collector is supposed to go, and despite the fact that the North-South Collector and we're not getting, is not being built as a road for cars, we are doing, expanding the bike lanes past where cars can go and getting that in before we have to put the road in. So, yeah, you have to be pro-smart growth. You cannot just willy-nilly throw houses wherever. There are quite a few projects that have been approved years and years and years ago, especially in McKenna, that unfortunately aren't coming before the council again, and council has very little, if any, say on that. That's what's causing the problems.
Ms. King, if someone labeled you as, say, the pro-environment candidate without regard to affordable housing needs or economic needs, what would you say?
Well, I think people know that I'm concerned about affordable housing. I'm involved in several groups that are developing affordable housing, and I am pro-smart growth, as we call it. And I actually have been meeting with developers about, who want to do the right thing. We have one project in Waikapu on Maui. I met with the developer just last week. There's 1,000 affordable housing units in that development, and he's done it right. He went, he's been working on this for 10 years with the community. He's got the full support of the community. He's got about over 10,000 acres of agricultural land that he's putting into trust that will never be developed. He's got affordable rentals in there as well, and then he's got his high-end houses as well. But the fact that he, and this is, this is what we've learned in Pacific Biodiesel that, and why we've never had a single protest in any one of our projects, is that you don't, you don't develop a project in an office or in a lab and then take it into a community and say, "This is what we're going to do." You develop it with the community. You make sure that it fits into the community plan. The community wants it and needs it. And what I wanted to say about the mall was that, you know, I've been approached by Maui Tomorrow about that, because we did not have support at the county council to stop that mall, and they ended up having to spend $80,000 to fight that in court and won. But we needed, we did need better support from our council member for that project, because it didn't fit into the community plan.
Mr. Couch, we're starting to get some questions, and actually for both of you, Ms. King as well. And one person wants to know about the housing crisis, and they feel that it's just gotten worse, and they want to know, councilman, if the traditional methods of building homes is not working, what needs to start happening now to build homes that residents on Maui can really afford?
We have to figure out why the people aren't building the homes, and we, my committee has formed a temporary investigative group that we just gave the report today on really what is the problem. We got all the developer, a lot of developers in, a lot of construction workers, and a lot of nonprofits, and we got them in a room, and they, they gave us what their problems are. So we've reported that out. We've come up with a priority of five different things that we need to, we can look at right away, and that's what my committee's going to discuss next week, and until we can get those priorities going. But the government's in the way. The bureaucrats in the administration sometimes get it in their heads that they can, you know, they're the ones controlling the situation, and we're trying to take out, there's a lot of books of interpretations, no rules, no laws. It's interpretations of laws. So those things need to be looked at, and we've been looking at them and changing an interpretation from what we, what the planning department or whatever department thinks the law says to say, "No, this is what council really means." And so, we're tightening up the laws, and it's taking a long time to do it, because there's a lot of, there's three binders of interpretations just in the planning department.
Ms. King, what do you think is causing this housing crisis, and what would be your solutions?
Well, we don't really have a housing advocate in the county. There's a Department of Housing and Human Concerns, but there's not a good professional staff there, and there are kind of parallel lines happening right now. There's the TIG, which is the working group that's working through the county council. There are groups in the community, and the Faith Action Group called FACE is working on a parallel tract of why this is not happening, and there's a 10-point plan there. I wish the two had been put together and could have worked together, and that's, those are the types of collaborations I would like to see in the future. But the FACE plan centers around a housing advocate. They don't want to see this housing advocate actually in the county administration. They want it to be somebody under a nonprofit in the community, and there needs to be a way for that person to be able to work with the administration and work with the county council and be sanctioned by the county council. Otherwise, it won't be as effective. But there is that feeling in the community that we need a professional person at that level that can, that can take maybe the things that Mr. Couch is talking about and take the things, the 10 points that they've come up with and actually implement it, because we've seen every year this comes up, and every year, nothing happens.
Ms. King, someone wants to know about your experience, and since serving on the State Board of Education many years ago, how have you been serving Maui County specifically? And have you ever served on a county board or commission?
I've served on a lot of the nonprofit boards in Maui County, from our, you know, public television, Akaku, to the Farmers Union, to Hui Malama Learning Center. I've done a lot of, I was a Girl Scout leader for four years. I served on the Boy Scout Council of Maui. I've served on some state boards and commissions. Actually, right now, I'm on HTDC, the High Tech Development Corporation, and I've served on, and I do serve on a couple of national nonprofits as well. So I have experience as a board member, as a corporate board member of companies. We have three companies that are kind of sister companies under Pacific Biodiesel. I've also worked in nonprofits. And when I was on the board of Hui Malama Learning Center, I saw a lot of overlap of programs, of literacy programs. So I wrote a grant for a literacy needs assessment, was asked by our executive director to step down off the board and actually run the program for two years. So I did that, working for the nonprofit, and then stepped back onto the board. But I feel like I have a broad scope of experience of being on the ground, running things, of running a business, of being in a policymaking position. And one of the hardest things about being on the Board of Education, which makes county council look a little bit easier in comparison, is when I got elected to that board and I, and I beat out a 20-year incumbent, I had to walk onto a board of 13 people, 12 of whom I'd never met before and who weren't attached to Maui at all. So the county council, at least, I know all the members, I know all the candidates, I know the issues, and everybody there hopefully is attached to Maui and has common goals.
We have got an interesting question from Tom from Kihei, and he wants to know from you, Mr. Couch, what are the values that you're guided by if reelected?
Wow. You know, I don't have any children, but I do have some godchildren that we've raised from, you know, we helped our friend raise them. They're 18 and 17 now, soon to be 19 and 17. Those are the people that we need to take care of. We need to take care of our kids. We also need to take care of our kupuna. We're going to be in the kupuna range here in a number of years, and, you know, I really take really good pride from Maui County. You know, my mom got ill on the mainland in northern Idaho. You know, Quarter Lane, Idaho is a pretty nice place, but when I tried to find some services, like we have here on Maui, MEO, Kauanoe Senior Services, all the senior services that we have, you couldn't find any. And then when she moved back to Southern California, I thought, okay, well, Southern California, they're going to have that, and even worse. And when I go to conferences with all elected county officials, find out that Maui County, bar none, has the best care for senior citizens, and we still have to do that, because we're going to get more and more, you know, because we're all growing, all of us baby boomers are getting there.
Ms. King, what are the values that guide you if elected to public service?
I think integrity is the number one, and transparency. I'm very open. I have a reputation of meeting with anybody and everybody and listening to people. It's very important to me to be able to collaborate and bring people in. And just recently, we had this big issue out at Olowalo, the seawall, and there was a lot of protesting, because the people that lived out there and the people that were concerned about the environment didn't want the seawall there. The state had been planning to do this since the Abercrombie administration, but what was the real impetus for a solution, finding a solution, was getting the Department of Transportation Director together with the protesters, and they started contacting me back in June. I didn't really get totally involved until this last month, and then I connected the two. But I think that putting people together and talking about common goals, being able to first understand that you both want the same things, and maybe you're both going about it different ways, is really important to finding actual solutions, and then finding the people who want to make solutions, because it's the right thing to do, and not, you know, not because they're trying to grab power or they're trying to get position, is really important. And so, you know, along with my family values, those are the values that really guide my desire to be in this position, because I know how much work it's going to be. I did a lot of due diligence before I agreed to run for this office, and those are the things I want to bring to the county government. I believe that you can have, be prosperous and still do the right thing, and that's why my slogan is "Pono Prosperity."
Someone from Maui wants to know about genetically modified organisms, and what's your stance on GMOs?
My stance on GMOs is, you know, I'm not a science, a scientist, and so I don't completely understand the science one way or another. I mean, both sides, for and against, have skewed the, have, you know, have taken the information that is favorable to their side. What really bothers me about GMOs are the pesticides that are used on GMOs and the, those of us who have to breed those pesticides. I also think there's a geopolitical issue with GMOs in that if, if the few companies that are doing it are allowed to grow and own the actual genetic makeup of the food that, you know, if the other, if organics disappear, and right now, there's a big pushback against it to save seeds, save organic seeds because of that fear, but we don't want a handful of companies owning all of our food in the future. That's a huge issue for me, and so, no, I'm not in favor of GMOs. I don't, I think it's, I think we can do things organically. We've, Pacific Biodiesel, got funding for five years to do biofuel crop demonstrations on Oahu and the Big Island, and we've never grown any GMOs, and we've done really well with these crops without the pesticides. So I know it can be done.
Mr. Couch, your thoughts on GMOs?
Yeah, I agree with Ms. King about the issue of having just a small amount of companies, and it's scary that companies are trying to consolidate now, control all the food. However, on GMOs themselves, and I also agree about the pesticide issue, that is something that we've been working on, getting some, the state to study our pesticide use a little bit more, and we're having a hard time getting them to, because they're underfunded, getting them to come out, but we are still putting pressure on them to do that. But GMOs themselves, one of the first GMO things was insulin. That is saving so many people's lives, extending their lives. So, you know, you can't just say they're good or they're bad. Depends on what they do. There are, there's the consensus of scientists that say, yeah, GMOs are fine. The current ones we have now, when they start doing weird things, putting animal and changing genes that way, cross-pollinating the genes like that, then you have to really, really test it a lot before it gets out to the market. The GMOs on Maui are seed, corn generally, and it was for a while soybeans, but I don't know that they're doing soybeans that much anymore. So those specific traits that they're doing now have been consensus of scientists saying that they're fine.
You know...
It's the pesticides.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Because I think one of the biggest issues is labeling, and people want to know what they're eating. The pushback against labeling from the GMO companies has created a lot of concern, like, why would you not, if it's so great, why would you not want to put a label on it?
So would you be in favor of labeling?
I'm absolutely in favor of labeling.
What about you, Mr. Couch? Would you be in favor of labeling?
Yeah. You know who, a lot of people don't catch this, is that a lot of, a lot of the people who label non-GMO are against labeling, because they're the ones that get an extra profit by putting on the non-GMO sticker. So those guys are the ones that are also fighting the labeling.
I want to move on to some other topics. One of our viewers wants to know about the telescopes on Maui, and, you know, we've heard so much about, not telescopes, but the, on Haleakala. And they want to know, what is the future of Haleakala, especially with so much attention has been put on TV? Well, you want to take that first?
Sure. University of Hawaii has a lot of the telescopes up on Haleakala. The one that's being built now is, I believe the whole outside is built, so all that's left is putting the telescope in and doing what the interior work. And that's supposedly the last one that's going to be up on Haleakala. That mountain, they've gone through over and over and over again with cultural specialists to take a look and see where they can do it, what kind of protocols they have to do. So it's been vetted through all the cultural specialists. Several of them have passed away since then, but it's, they've gone, they've gone to the community, they've gone to the people at the time when those things were planned and permitted. Unfortunately, it was years, years ago, right? And so, the people who are coming up now saying, "Oh, we don't want it there, and we didn't have a say then," some of them weren't even born when some of these things are, were being put up. The one that's there now, the Daniel, I believe it's the Daniel Illinois Solar Telescope, it's completed on the outside, so the impact is, has already been happened, and it's already been mitigated with the cultural practitioners.
Ms. King, do you think that the Mauna Kea, I mean, Haleakala, rather, has been properly managed?
Well, I don't want to speak to that, because I don't know enough about the management up there, but I do know that there's a feeling in the community that it hasn't been, there hasn't been good collaboration with the community to explain to people what, what the telescopes are all about and why they're necessary. And so, when things like protests happen, like, they have been, I mean, they've been far worse on the Big Island, but there have been some on Haleakala, that's when you need to sit down with the community and bring people into it, because not only the people who are protesting, but the people who are watching the protest were very confused about why there's a protest going on. And it's kind of the same thing with development. You can't, if you start development and you start talking to people one year, and then 20 years later, it still hasn't been built, and you're still working on it, and they're different people, there needs to be some kind of, you know, deadlines or revisit of these projects so that they continue, and there's, and I think there needs to be, and I believe there, I think, you know, from the people I've been talking to that actually worked there, that they're trying to get out there more. They're trying to, to present what they're actually doing there from a scientific point of view. It's unfortunate that it's actually, you know, a point of contention, because I don't think every Hawaiian culturalist is against it. You know, astronomy is part of the background of the Polynesians, but how we go about doing these things has to be very culturally sensitive, and it has to bring people in as we do it, not after. You don't go do something and then try to explain it to somebody after why you did it.
Well, unfortunately, our time has come to an end. It feels too short. I wish we had more time, but thank you so much for coming from Maui, and I know you've got a flight to catch, so thank you again for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Now, we have more from Maui. Hikino students captured what it's really like and what people are truly feeling when a legacy sugar industry shuts down for good. Life as the workers and their families, how they knew it, will never be the same. Students from Maui's Baldwin High School wanted to share, wanted to be there for the final days of HCNS.
I think that type of camaraderie is what I appreciate working in where I'm at at HCNS.
The Hawaii Commercial and Sugar Mill along Puunene Avenue, Maui, is a reminder of an industry that once dominated Hawaii's economy. Standing since 1882, the factory has employed generations of workers in production and in fields. Wes Bissen, a machinist, followed his father's path to working at HCNS.
I started for the company in 1981. I started in Paia Mill. My family, they are from Paia. It's kind of nice working there, you know, where my family works. The company's been open for 144 years. My dad worked there, and I wanted to do the same thing he did.
Koa Martin, a millwright, also has family working for the company.
My grandfather worked here. He was an irrigator, and he retired after 40, 40-some-year service. My father worked here for about 16 years. He was a heavy equipment mechanic, and then I started here 20 years ago.
After losing $30 million in 2015, Hawaii Commercial and Sugar announced its plans to phase out sugar production and shut down operations by the end of 2016. 675 workers, including Bissen and Martin, will lose their jobs.
People are uneasy as to what's, what's going to happen and how they're going to make their ends meet. A lot of people here are homeowners, and they have to pay their mortgages, they have to provide for their college education, the kids, but we'll be out there looking for a job, just like anybody else.
But while the future is uncertain, the workers of HCNS won't be alone in their struggle to adapt to such change. The Maui County and Hawaii State Governments are working to create a social safety net to support the laid-off workers.
I'd like to say thank you to the Maui County, the state, Governor Iggy, for helping us, helping the people transition into something new, and I'm going to put all my efforts into that.
I'll be just like everybody else out there, looking for another job. But in the meantime, until my time is up, I'm going to be here focusing on what I need to get done to keep this factory running, make it home safe every night to my kids, and pay my bills.
You know, it's sad that they're going to close, but we are big boys, okay? We've got to focus on how it's going to affect everybody, and, you know, just try to build a better life. to build a better life from here on.
With the closing of HCNS comes the end of a chapter in Hawaii's history. This is Chanel McCurey from HP Baldwin High School for Hikino.
Welcome back. From one council race to another, we're now joined by the candidates for Honolulu City Council District Nine, which includes the rapidly growing areas of Mililani, Waikele, Waipahu, and Eva Beach. The nonpartisan candidates are incumbent Honolulu City Councilman Ron Menor, who currently represents District Nine. Councilman Menor chairs the Council's Committee on Executive Matters and Legal Affairs, and is the vice chair of the Zoning and Planning Committee. Councilman Menor is also a former state senator and state representative. He's an attorney by trade. Emil Chertina is a computer specialist, programmer, and analyst with the University of Hawaii's Cancer Center. Mr. Chertina ran unsuccessfully for the city council in 2008 and for the state house in 2012 and 2014. He was also a member of the Mililani Waipio Mele Manu Neighborhood Board from 2013 to 2014. He holds a master's degree in nuclear science and physical engineering. Welcome to you both, and thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having us.
Councilman, why don't I start off with you? Talk about a little bit about your background, and how does it shape your political values?
Well, you know, I come from a family with a proud tradition of public service. My late father, Ben Menor, was a former Big Island State Senator and Hawaii State Supreme Court Justice. My uncle Barney Menor was a vice speaker in the State House of Representatives. So, I grew up in a household where public service and community involvement was emphasized, and very important activities within which to become involved. I've also been blessed with many opportunities, and so, I continue to be involved in public service, to serve in elective office, because this is my way of giving back to the community in which I've been fortunate enough to be able to live, work, and raise my own family here in Hawaii.
Mr. Chertina, talk about your coming to America and how this experience would shape your values if elected.
It was a long time ago, 28 years ago. I came with my wife. We escaped together. We escaped communism. And, you know, coming here, it was kind of okay. We raised our five children, and then I realized that, you know, they might not be growing in a country I was escaping to. So, it looked like, you know, I would have to do something. So, I started to challenge the political system here, because, you know, I don't think we are running on the right track. We are not going to the right direction. And it reminds me a little bit what I had to escape from. So, I want to, you know, bring this awareness to the people of America, and Hawaii especially, because, you know, it's a dear place for me, and I value what America did historically tremendously. So, I really appreciate to be here. There is no place to escape from here, so I want to make sure this is really the place we can stay and we can, you know, grow, and our kids, definitely for my children, the future generation of this state, I'm running for office.
Let's talk about rail. Councilman Menor, in what way could the city get more funding, or HEART get more funding to complete this project on time and on budget?
Well, you know, I have supported rail in general because of the fact that I believe that it's necessary to address the transportation needs of many of my constituents who have to work and commute to downtown Honolulu, Kakako, and the Alamoana areas. But clearly, you've raised a critical and important issue, which is, how do we find the funding to complete the final segment of rail? I have taken the position that we should consider all financing options that will not require increases in real property taxes. So, for example, I think that what we need to push for is to eliminate the 10% skim that the state has been taking off of the general excise tax revenues, and instead to reallocate that to rail. In addition to that, I believe that we need to look at public and private partnerships. For example, I think we need to look at inventive solutions and plans to consider the possibility of imposing assessments on developers who have rail projects planned along the rail route, given the fact that they're going to realize a tremendous increase in real property values in the stations that will be located in the city center. I also think that the city should consider ways in which we might be able to leverage the substantial increase in real property tax collections that will result in the areas surrounding the rail stations as a means of financing rail going forward. So, I think that we need to look at all options. We need to be innovative and creative, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to accomplish those things in the future.
You know, let me follow up with that. You know, there's just such a growing frustration, and every time you open the paper, it looks like the cost has ballooned. So, if someone's frustrated with rail and the way that rail has been built, the pace that it's been going at, the cost, why should someone reelect you when these problems have plagued the rail? Not saying that you're in charge of rail, but you've been a part of it.
Sure. So, I think one thing that needs to be emphasized is that, under the city charter, of course, HEART is ultimately responsible for the management and operation of rail, and there's no question that HEART should have done a better job of cost containment. They should have exercised more proactive oversight with respect to the contractors and subcontractors. They should have also anticipated more effectively the costs associated with the utility clearance issues. And so, clearly, a much better job could have been done in addressing costs. I share the frustrations. The council members share the frustrations of the public in regards to HEART's management and where rail has been going in the context of costs. So much so, that the council, several months ago, passed a resolution requesting a city audit of HEART. And an audit was done at the request of the city council, and it was because of this audit that it was brought to light the financial and operational deficiencies that have plagued HEART and rail. So, the council has been asking tough and probing questions. And in fact, there was a time when the council was considering imposing a ceiling or cap on expenditures as a way of exerting pressures on HEART to do a better job of cost containment. So, the council's been doing its job, but we're hoping that HEART will be able to do a better job in the future.
Mr. Chertina, do you think the council has been doing its job, and what ways would you try to get this train finished?
I mean, it sounds good that, you know, he shares the frustration, but, you know, just a few weeks, a few months ago, he was voting for the extension of the tax, the GT tax, which was supposed to fund the next five years, which is almost $1.8 billion, which was voted for the project. So, you know, at that time already, the price tag of the rail was so big that, you know, he should at least understand that if it doubles, I mean, because it doubled already that time, it was $5.1 billion. And also, it was very delayed. So, obviously, something was terribly wrong, but then, still, they were voting for another increase of taxes. So, you know, I think at this point, the audit sounds interesting to me. I mean, definitely, we should always look at where the money goes, but at the same time, you know, this project, in my opinion, never supposed to be here. I mean, and when I ran in 2008, you know, the price tag was $3.9 billion. $1 billion out of that was for the cost overrun. So, obviously, it was $2.9 billion. You know, it's unbelievable what happened. There was too many lies. The people who voted for it were totally misinformed, because even the voting was so narrow, it was 50.6%, 50.6, just a little narrow margin of people who voted for it. So, because of that, we have this biggest, I think it's the most ill-conceived project in Hawaii history.
But it's continuing, and it's going to continue, so what would be your idea for finding--
Unfortunately, with this council we have, it will continue. The council has the power, but they will definitely vote for another tax increase. I just want to warn the viewers that, you know, it's going to happen immediately. The mayor will have nothing to do with it. Even if Charles DeJoux would like to propose that, you know, he will veto every bill the council member will come up with, they will be easily overwritten, so he won't be able to do anything. So, in this case, you know, I have my idea how to deal with it. I would like to approach it like the Americans should, which means, you know, we should have a resolution. We should have, again, encourage people to take their government in their own hands. And we have a petition which 75,000 people can sign, and we can create an ordinance which will automatically make any tax increase absolutely impossible, because it will be out of the law, and this blank check which was written to HEART will be just tear apart.
You know, we could continue on talking about rail--
We could.
But let's move on to a different topic. Let's talk about affordable housing. You know, there's such a need out there. Councilman Menor, what are some of your solutions for finding more affordable housing?
Well, it is a critical concern, and especially to the extent that it is one of the causes for the homeless issues that has been plaguing our island in recent years. And affordable housing is something that I've been pushing for for many years, and it's a difficult issue to resolve. I think the one thing that needs to be realized is the fact that it's a difficult and complex problem that doesn't lend itself to a single panacea or a solution. It requires a multi-pronged approach that involves an array of tools. So, some of the things I've pushed for, for example, have included continued implementation of the accessory dwelling unit, or ADU program, which I helped to establish. I think we need to do more in regards to improving and expanding upon our Section Eight and rental assistance programs. I've been pushing for an increase in tax incentives under our land use ordinance. I think we need to encourage and expand upon more public and private partnerships focusing on nonprofit affordable housing developers and utilizing their expertise. I think we also need to push for inclusionary zoning with respect to new developments, combined with developer incentives. I think we also have to push for facilitating state financing, such as providing more low-income housing tax credits for nonprofit affordable developers so that they can develop more affordable housing. And another critical area that the city should continue to work on is with respect to our city-owned affordable housing projects. At present, the city owns over 1,200 affordable rental units. It's important that we refurbish these and that we keep these in the rental, affordable housing rental inventory in the future.
Mr. Chertina?
I think the affordable housing problem is just the symptom. The real cancer here is exactly what I would call my ideological differences with my opponent, because, you know, this state was under the management of one political party for almost 62 years. So, obviously, they didn't create enough opportunities. They didn't create enough robust economy here. So, we have to deal with those issues. So, they brought those problems here. The homeless doesn't happen overnight. They are happening because, you know, there's not enough jobs, there's not enough affordable anything. So, obviously, their tax increases for anything, including the Bundagl rail, is obviously making the cost of living here very difficult. And now, 50% of Hawaii residents are living paycheck to paycheck. So, I mean, affordable housing--
So, what specific solutions would you have, would you offer to help the problem?
I mean, every solution which I hear from the political sphere is basically, you know, force the developers to create little, small units, affordable one-bedroom apartments or, you know, studios. But, you know, it's very hard to force the developer to do something like that. I mean, those are also entrepreneurs. So, unless, you know, they, those regulations are totally discouraging investment even in Hawaii, because, you know, nobody wants to really invest here. I mean, we don't even have enough probably developers to finish the rail itself, so it's kind of--
What would your plan be, then, for a solution?
The solution would be, you know, get the government out of this business, basically. Regulations are not what drives the business. There have to be jobs which can make the people earn enough money so they can afford the units.
Councilman, did you want to add something?
Yeah, no, just briefly. I think that if you study the issue carefully and you have discussions with people who are involved in housing development, they'll tell you that in regards to private developers, that generally speaking, they build homes, residential units, to cater to the market demand. However, for-profit and nonprofit developers are all in agreement that with respect to those who are really hurting and who need truly affordable housing, those in the really low-income ranges, that it takes partnerships between the public and private sector, the government and private developers and nonprofit entities, to be able to work together to make more affordable housing available. And that's why I mentioned that we need to come up with an array of tools to deal with the issue, and it takes the involvement of different levels of government and the public and private sectors being involved in addressing the issue.
One of the issues that Councilman Menor brought up was homelessness, and there is a link between affordable housing and homelessness. What would be your solution, Mr. Chertina--
On behalf--
To get more homeless off the streets and into a better situation?
Unfortunately, we have to look at the spectrum, who the homeless people are. I know there are like three categories, in my opinion. I mean, there's people who cannot afford the rent, cannot afford the housing, so they live in a tent, and they go to work. So, those, I would call them houseless. Then, we have, I think, 30%. I mean, I'm still a member of the Neighborhood Board, so I listen to the people who come and, you know, testify exactly what's going on with the homeless. So, there are like 30% of the homeless are even non-Americans, which are here probably from, you know, Micronesia or whatever. So, they live here with a family. So, there are another level, another homeless population is here, you know, the mentally unstable, drug addicts, and so on. So, basically, there are, plus, you know, there are people which are encouraged to even come to Hawaii to be homeless, because it's a beautiful weather, and, you know, I heard about the one-way tickets from different states from the mainland. So, you know, the, also the social network here, which is also provided by government, is at some point even encourages. It's almost like a business itself, because the more homeless there is, there is more clients for the government officials to ask for, you know, for funds and for taxes.
We have another question from one of our viewers, and they want to know what specific contributions each of you has made to District Nine. Mr. Chertina, why don't you go ahead and answer that?
Okay. I mean, my contribution, I mean, I am a father of five children, which are all college. Four of them are in college, one is in high school. I'm making sure, I'm preparing the new generation of Americans to be really, you know, not dependent on government. So, they have to go to restaurants to create their own, you know, income to be able to afford the college. I'm not paying anything for them, so I'm making them more responsible. I'm also a long-term member of Neighborhood Board. I'm listening to what's going on, and I'm sharing it with the other people, because I ran for the offices before, because I wanted to know what's going on. I am trying to create a platform, somebody who has ears, because I don't think we are represented as taxpayers. I think we are not represented. The governments we have right now, they are more like rulers. They tell us what to do, they know the best, what's good for us. I don't feel like I am represented. It looks like more I am ruled by somebody who is telling me what's the best for me. And so, I mean, my contribution, I would say, would be definitely my family and my approach, my trying to, you know, find out if what's going on with the community, really, because, you know, he was always, he was unchallenged, so that's what I decided to run. And that was the same case for the previous races I entered, because we think that's unchallenged, like, everything is okay, and it's not.
Councilman, what were your specific contributions? And is there a particular project that you feel that, or a particular accomplishment that you've put forth that maybe doesn't get that much attention?
Yeah. Well, I think I've done an effective job. I've tried to do an effective job in getting things done for my district. As a city council member, we deal with issues that people are very concerned about, basic issues on a day-to-day basis. So, I've worked very, very hard to try to get the city to provide important core services for the residents of my district, including road and sidewalk repairs, park improvements, expansion, and improvements in bus service, adequate to police and fire protection and emergency services. These are important services to the community. We've been able to get the city to provide those significantly during my term in office. In addition to that, I think I've also been a very responsive and accessible city council member. I've devoted countless hours meeting with residents on a regular basis to discuss and to listen to their concerns, to get them engaged in government. You know, I attend on a regular basis, community Neighborhood Board meetings, and participate in numerous civic and community activities. I do site inspections routinely to try to identify areas in my communities that are in need of repair, as well as speak at youth and school events. I always try to personally respond to every email and phone call that I get from my district, and I also send out a monthly report via email to thousands of my constituents to update them in concerns. So, these are my contributions as a city council member.
You know, there's a lot of concern over ethics right now, and Councilman Menor, it must be something that you're thinking about. How would you lobby for stronger ethics and financial disclosure laws?
Well, I've been a strong supporter of vigorous enforcement of our ethics laws, and also providing adequate funding and resources to the City Ethics Commission and its staff so that the agency can effectively carry out its enforcement responsibilities. So, therefore, during my first term, the city council has consistently approved all of the budget requests submitted to us by the Ethics Commission. In addition to that-- In addition to that, I'm planning on meeting with our new executive director of the Ethics Commission, Jan Yumane, in the near future to discuss ways in which we might be able to strengthen our ethics laws. And then finally, I wanted to point out that the city council also passed out a resolution, Resolution 16-164, which calls for a comprehensive management and performance audit to identify the problems that have raised concerns and that have plagued the agency in the past, as well as to try to restore greater public trust and confidence in the agency going forward.
Mr. Scherzina, how would you restore public trust in our ethics, ethics laws?
I think the fundamental problem here is that the Ethics Commission is basically appointed by the politicians. So they hardly ever, you know, convict the real perpetrators. So, you know, I would have to probably consult this with some lawyers, how to create some kind of, you know, maybe jury, which would be created by the peers, which would be the constituents instead of politicians, and they would be deciding what the crime was. I mean, I happened to run against a city council member in 2008, which was fined twice, basically, because he was receiving $60,000 a year salary from Kapole Chamber of Commerce while he was still on the city council, deciding what rail are we going to have. So, I mean, there's corruption. He got $6,500 fine, and then he was fined again in 2015. So, you know, it's very important, because that trust in government is none, in my opinion.
Of course, that was Emil, right?
Did you want to expand more on that?
Yeah. So I think, I share Emil's concerns, that it's important that we have strong campaign spending in ethics laws. I think that there are provisions in our ethics laws that are already quite meaningful, and it's important that we enforce those. We have laws that specifically prohibit certain kinds of gifts from being accepted by city officials. If there are certain gifts, for example, that could be inferred as being offered to try to influence that particular city council members or city officials' votes or positions, then that would be illegal. And under our ethics laws, there are tough sanctions that can be imposed for violations of the law. So like any good law that we pass, I think the ultimate goal or concern is effective enforcement, and that's something that I've been focusing on as a city council member.
You know, Mr. Scherzina, you have a really interesting perspective on department heads in the city, and you actually have stated that you think that they should not be appointed by the mayor. What are your thoughts on that?
Head of the city? They are appointed by the mayor, like HEART or...
Department heads?
Department heads. I mean, you know, it's a tendency of this government, what I'm seeing in Hawaii, they create those like HEART for the rail. There is agencies which are kind of distant from the politicians, which we elect as an electorate, and they can be blamed that it's HEART's problem, or it's this commission on that commission. We are expecting now 20 new amendments to the city charter, which will be on the ballot in November. And, you know, many of them are, again, asking for another type of commission to be created. So it's like unnecessary to me. I mean, I was shocked myself, and I realized that even the government unions are being formed in Hawaii, which means, you know, in 1978, there was an amendment of Hawaii Constitution, and suddenly, there are union, there are government employees which are unionized, which is like another layer between me, as a Vida people, and my representatives. Suddenly, we have this union, which is, you know, creating this extra layer of definitely not transparency. So, I mean, for me, it's the issue of trust of the government. I mean, if government, as we have it right now, decides to create some commission, and it's going to be appointed by the same people we don't trust. So obviously, they will appoint the people they trust and they can control.
Councilman, do you see a change, a need for a change, in the way city services are managed?
Well, I think that as technology has developed, as technology has developed, changes in technology have dramatically changed the way government services are provided. So, for example, the public has an increased ability to be able to conduct city business online, in terms of online accessibility. So from the city council's perspective, I think that it's important that this, our legislative body implements these kinds of modern technological advancements in the way we conduct business. I think that the council has improved online accessibility for interested parties who want to follow what's been happening in government, but I think more can be done to promote openness and transparency. So that's something I'd like to continue to work on in the future.
Well, Councilman Menor and Ms. Emil Scherzina, thank you so much for joining us. I really appreciate your time tonight, and good luck. Well, join us next week as we hear from the Democratic incumbent state senator Laura Thielan and her challenger Republican Robert Nagamine. They'll be here to talk about the most pressing needs in State Senate District 25, which runs from Kailua to Portlock. And then stay with us as we're joined by the two candidates for the Moloka'i seat on the Maui County Council. Incumbent Stacy Helm Corvillo has held the Moloka'i seat in the council for four years, but now she faces political newcomer and recent University of Hawaii graduate Keanee Rollins Fernandez in the upcoming general election. We'll hear from all four candidates on the next Insights on PBS Hawaii. Thank you so much for watching. I'm Mahalani Richardson. Ahuiho.